All right, and it is September 21st, Tuesday, September 21st, 1:03 PM. We are here for a special meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Commissioner Fiedler is not able to join us this afternoon, and we are addressing a few items that were intended to be on our agenda for our meeting yesterday. But we're not able to get on there. So today, we have a new business first item, and I'll put it all in the chat here. We have a resolution, and that would actually be 2021-21, a resolution authorizing the purchase of real property from Union Pacific Company for the Community Justice Center. Our second item would be consideration of a proposal for then update Phase One Environmental Site Assessment for the Harrison Reduction Work Site, 121 and 125 East Second Street. Third, we have Nodel Park easement. Fourth, a resolution for Park Replacement Fund. So let's get into item number one. Unless Commissioner Marcelle, you have any other comments or questions before we move on? I just want to make sure we're, we have good connection.
I'm good to go.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, all right, so Mrs. Welter, how exciting. Thank you, Rain here. And do you maybe want to share your screen? And we can, or actually, I'm sorry if you don't have that pulled up.
I do have it. Do you want to look at the resolution together or the agreement itself?
Um, I was, I was going to ask to look at the resolution. We can read, read that into the record. That'd be great. I apologize, I did not queue that up. But that would be fantastic, and, and.
Let me make sure I've got the right screen to share. And we go. It's weird. I think that's right. Sorry, I, sometimes I have trouble with screen sharing.
It looks like it's working.
Okay, great. I have all the relevant documents up. So here we go.
It might be lagging, but it's zoomed in on a very small portion of an Excel spreadsheet that looked like it was.
That's, that's not it, sorry.
That's all right. I'll, I'll also work to, to pull that up because we had an issue yesterday with someone else sharing files, so.
Oh, here, I got it, I got it. It just, it does strange things sometimes. And I ought to be able to. There. Does that look like a resolution now?
Not yet.
No?
Oh, wait. Yes. We see it.
Okay. Can you enlarge it, Katie?
Yes. Yes. Here, is that good? It's huge on my side now.
Maybe it's my screen, but it's not legible on my screen.
Let me, I just pulled it up. Let, I'll, I'll try to.
Sorry.
It's, no, I don't think it's you. It's, it's, um, like I said, we had a similar issue yesterday, so. I will open it up.
I can see it now, Sarah.
Okay. Okay.
So you can either take it, or if you can see it, then you can, we can leave it. Whatever you want to do.
Yeah, we can, we can leave it, Katie.
Okay.
We can see now. All right, um, great, give us a couple cheerful, successful statements on.
Sure, well, this is an important milestone, but it is still just, we're still, still at the beginning of this project in many ways. But the, the county's attorneys, including Chris Floyd and Melanie Gramberg, Pat Wilson, and myself have, have reached, I think successfully negotiated terms with Union Pacific Railroad to sell the property, about 12 acres located at Harrison Avenue and Monroe Street, which includes the larger parcel there at the intersection of those streets, as well as several outlying parcels, or say outlying, but they're, they're quite close, along what is Oak Street there. And the, this resolution empowers the Chair, Commissioner Mudge, to sign a purchase agreement that reflects those terms on behalf of the county. And also, today would ask that the, the Board authorize the release of $5,000 for deposit earnest money on the, on, as, as a term of the agreement. The, I, I'm not sure how many details I should go into with the agreement, you know, in this time. But, you know, it would convey the property to Lake County for the purchase price of $100,000. There would be no deed restrictions, which was something that we worked hard to negotiate. And the county has, to the, to the greatest extent possible, limited its environmental exposure on the property, although will be responsible for remediation of the site in accordance with, with state and federal environmental law. And there is an additional piece to this that I wanted to bring to your attention today, which is that there is, we just received this this week from Union Pacific. There's a lease for a driveway that crosses through the, the southwest corner of the property with a Mr. Brink. And it's, it's unclear to me, and Chris, feel free to weigh in, but it's unclear to us whether, how active that lease is, like whether, whether that driveway is being used. We have time during the due diligence period either to come back to UP and ask that they terminate that lease, or if the county wishes it could continue to honor the lease, it has very favorable termination provisions for the county because of course, or, or for the owner of the property, because of course, Union Pacific is the landlord right now. So there, it doesn't raise a concern, is what I would say, but it's just an additional note to the transaction.
Yeah, Kate, the only thing I would clarify is, Katie, I think you said it was in the southwest corner. I thought map that looked at, it was the southeast corner.
Okay, it's right along Monroe.
Yeah, it's like at the, the, along Monroe at the end there. And I don't know, with the screen sharing issues we're having, I don't know if that's something that can be brought up or not. But it's above the, if I recall correctly, Katie, it's above the Starditch. So it's not adjacent, it looks like, to the.
Let me.
That's the resolution. Oh, and I was also going to mention, it looks like that resolution has the wrong number. If, I think Sarah had mentioned it's 2021-21?
Yeah, it should be 21, correct, Katie?
Okay, I can correct that right now. I was going off of the last resolution number.
Yeah.
Last meeting, but.
Um, here, let me, we cannot see the map, Katie. What?
Sorry.
No, it's okay. I will, I will share because I just think that's going to be.
And then I can send this to you, or should I put it in the chat?
What is it?
Uh, the lease itself, which shows the least area.
Oh, uh, it looks like it's this here.
Oh.
Can everybody see that?
Yes, yeah, and you're right, Chris, the southeast.
Yeah, north, it's northeast, yeah.
I think that is pretty active, Katie.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so during, this is something that, you know, we can certainly open up a conversation with Mr. Brink during the due diligence period that will follow being under contract, and, you know, just to explore what the best course of action will be for, for the county.
Yep.
Add something to you.
That sounds good to me.
Yeah.
Okay. Yep, um, all right, and I will also pull this up. Okay. Um, all right, I, I don't have any other questions for you, Katie. And many things have been given to you and Chris, Melanie, and ever, everyone else involved. But this really is a huge milestone. And although, like you said, it's, there's, there's more steps to take. Commissioner Marcelle, before I read this into the record, do you have any other questions or comments for Katie?
No, I don't, I don't think so. I think really my only question or point of clarification is just that we're past the point of like negotiations. This is the final step in ac, in acquiring property. And, and then Sarah will sign off on that. But if anything comes up in this, in this authorization for purchase, that it has to come back to the Board, I would imagine that you will do that for us, yeah?
So, um, in terms of like this, this is good, good questions. In terms of the steps, so we actually have a signed agreement from Union Pacific already. They, they signed, which is wonderful, because that means when Commissioner Mudge signs, we can record the agreement, and there won't be going, any going back for either party in terms of just being under contract to purchase the property. But then there will be, there is remaining due diligence to do, not, not a huge amount, but first, the surveying work, which has already begun, to complete the surveying of those additional parcels that UP offered for sale. That, that needs to be finished before closing. An updated Phase One Environmental Assessment, which is the next agenda item, and that needs to be completed because Phase One assessments only provide protection to the, the acquirer of the property if they're less than 180 days old. And so unfortunately, our first Phase One expired, so we just have to do, do an update. And then the third, one of the third, like concrete components of due diligence is to risk, to apply for, and which has begun, and receive a comfort letter from the EPA, which is, is essentially a letter from the Environmental Protection Agency telling the county that, you know, it understands that the county's going to acquire the property and that the county will follow the applicable laws for the use and potential remediation of the property. And if it does so, that the EPA has, Noah, does not expect it would need to sue or find the county. So that's.
Okay.
A comfort letter. I think also, as we talked about with the task force, it'll be important while the county's under contract to get community input as well. And in particular, I think, you know, reaching out to the neighbors of the property, and also having some more concrete conversations with the city, because there will be some entitlements work that we'll have to do, including, you know, potentially a conditional use permit, maybe some adjusting of boundary lines and things like that. So there's, those are, those are the, you know, the remaining steps before the county actually takes title to the property. And before the, the county decides to close, of course, the commissioners will ha, have a final opportunity to review the new available information and make that final decision.
Okay, cool, that's, that's all the answer I was looking for, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
And I will send out an updated resolution for, with the different number right now.
Okay. Um, all right, and with that, I will read this into the record. So we have resolution number 2021-21 of the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Lake State of Colorado, authorizing the purchase of real property from Union Pacific Railroad Company for the Community Justice Center project. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of Lake County here in, after the county has determined that there is a need and necessity for a new Lake County Community Justice Center, including facilities for the courts, jail, and other complementary community facilities, the project. And whereas pursuant to CRS 30-11-101, the county is empowered to purchase and hold real property for the use of the county to sell, convey, or exchange any real property owned by the county deemed to be in the best interest of the county and its inhabitants, and to make all contracts and do all other acts in relation to property. And whereas, having conducted extensive due diligence in this matter, the county deemed, deems it in the best interest of the county and its inhabitants to acquire certain real property consisting of 12.27 plus or minus acres in Lake County, Colorado, as more fully described on the attached Exhibit A, and as to be specifically determined by subsequent survey, the property. And whereas the property is believed to be owned by the Union Pacific Railroad Company, a Delaware corporation, UPRR, and whereas the Board of County Commissioners has reviewed and approves of the form of substance of the purchase and sale agreement attached hereto as Exhibit B, purchased and sale agreement, now therefore be, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Lake, Colorado, that Section 1, the county hereby makes and adopts the determinations and findings contained in the recitals set forth above. Section 2, the county hereby finds and determines that the property is an appropriate site for the project, and that there is a public need and purpose for the project. Section 3, the county hereby authorizes the Chair of the Board of County Commissioners, Sarah Mudge, to execute the purchase and sale agreement on behalf of the county, adopted at this meeting of the Board of County Commissioners of County of Lake, Colorado, on this 21st day of September 2021.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, I think with the, the date update and resolution number update, I didn't notice anything else that I had a question about.
I don't have anything else either that I have any questions about at this point.
All right.
All right, so I will make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 2021-21.
I will second that. Any further discussion?
No, I don't think so. Just a huge thank you to our legal team for their work on this. We've made it pretty far. This is super exciting, so thank you so much. We are very appreciative of you.
Definitely.
Thank you, guys. I, I will send over the revised resolution, and then also I'm going to send the signed, there are two pages to, one, page 10 to initial, and then the final page to sign on the purchase agreement. I'm going to send you the one that UP has already executed, so we just have a single signed document.
Okay.
In terms of releasing the $5,000 earnest money, is that something I just, we'll work with Crystal on, or I don't know the mechanics of that.
Yeah, why not? I, I mean, we can formally just approve that release right now, so there's no, uh, I don't know, might just have it be a little bit cleaner and, or at least I'm willing to do that. Commissioner Marcelle, do you have a problem with that?
No, I, I'm good with that.
Okay. And then we can kind of get all the proper info, Katie, from you, and you can work with Crystal.
Okay.
To get a proper, properly addressed check. Yep, so I'll, I'll entertain a motion to approve the release of $5,000.
So we got to vote, we got to vote on our first motion first.
Oh, goodness.
Sorry.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, hearing no further discussion on the motion on the table. All those in favor? I.
I, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so with the, with the earnest money release, I'll entertain a motion to approve the release of $5,000 to be applied as earnest money in the property acquisition.
So moved.
Any further discussion?
No, thank you.
All right, hearing none, all those in favor? I.
I.
Okay. All right, yeah, woo-hoo. Big, big steps, all right. Next, no, no more time for celebration.
Back to the lines.
Okay, now really back to business.
Back to business, that's about as much time as we have to celebrate our successes here. All right, number two. So the consideration of the proposal for that Phase One that you had mentioned, Katie. I have a question, do we, as we go through and these timelines or termination kind of timelines are, will they remain 180 days? And also, is this, I mean, do we have to, is the assessment essentially an assessment that nothing has changed on the site? And therefore, it's not going to be as expensive or maybe in depth as the, the original assessment?
Right.
Okay.
I think the, the environmental firm has to, has to go back and do a search for any new information that might have materialized, and they're sort of on the first pass at this. It means very extensive, you know, they made FOIA requests to the EPA, for example, to get anything that might be known about the property. I think now they will just ask for, you know, any updates. They also have to actually come out onto the site to physically observe that there aren't changes. But yeah, it's considerably less expensive. The proposal for the update is $3,600. It is budgeted as part of the, and, and will be partially funded through the DOLA grant that we've had on this project. And, you know, it's below the threshold requiring procurement. Given that Landmark's been doing this work, you know, they're able to do the update much less expensively than any other provider, so I do recommend proceeding with this proposal.
Great. That seems straightforward to me. Commissioner Marcelle, any questions?
No, no, it seems very straightforward to me.
Okay, great. Excellent. I mean, even though there's no requirement for a formal decision, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of that first one, sorry, Phase One Environmental Up, Site Assessment Update for the Harrison Reduction Work Site.
So moved.
All right, second, and any further discussion?
Sorry, go ahead, Katie.
I just realized, I didn't answer your question about, does the new 180-day period still apply? And it does, so, but, but we feel very confident that the county will be able to close with period, and hopefully quite a bit sooner. So it is, I think it's the appropriate time to revisit the Phase One.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, hearing no further discussion? All, all those in favor? I.
I.
All right, well, thanks so much, Katie.
Thank you, guys. I'll let Landmark know that they can, they're authorized to proceed.
Okay, appreciate it.
Thanks.
All righty, bye-bye, and I'll get you that, those signatures. I'll, I'll look at that right after, right after we get off this meeting.
Yeah, I mean, if at all possible to do it today, it took quite a bit of just last minute wrangling to even get a document signed by UP, so. Not leave any room for challenge.
Yeah, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, okay, and into item number three, the Nodel Parks easement. Commissioner Marcelle?
Yeah, so I was approached by Noah from Build a Generation to move forward with the easement with Nodel Parks. We have previously had this brought forward to us with Beth Helmke and Get Outdoors Leadville. And so what we're looking to do is create an easement within Nodel Parks, excuse me, that will be dedicated as a public space so that we can put a playground in, in those parks for those communities. And I'll let Noah speak to the grant and the logistics, logistics of that easement. Noah, if you want to add in there?
Yeah, of course, thanks, Kyla. And if I cut out, I'm sorry, just flag me or wave at me. Internet has been especially bad today. So I, the, the easement, I think, was drafted two years ago, and for a host of really good reasons. Nothing has happened with it since then. When Vanessa came on to GOAL, we, we met with her, and this was identified as something that probably makes sense to give back to Build a Generation to, to take forward for now, instead of trying to have Vanessa get caught up to speed on it and, and continue leading it. So I don't know if, if there's any action that needs to be taken today, but just wanted to restart the conversation, wanted to come to the county first, make sure that the easement and this whole project still makes sense before I reengage with Nodel Parks and make sure that they're still on board. So, yeah, I just wanted to, to have commissioners and potentially legal review the easement with new eyes and make sure that, that the agreement still makes sense. And then happy to take direction as to how to engage with Nodel and, and move this project forward.
Thanks, Noah. So I think then our next step, Chris, you can jump in and correct me if, if I'm wrong, is for you to review the draft easement and the language in the easement?
Yes, please. I was actually just getting ready to type into the chat a message to asking Noah to forward a copy of that to me, since I, I don't appear to have anything in my file on this.
Noah, has there been any revisions to the easement since Beth first brought it to us?
I, I do not believe there are, but, or there have been. But it's been, it was written in a Google Doc, so it's possible that somebody made, made some edits to it, but I, I don't believe that, that any, because it was September of 2019, where it looks like the last person went in and made changes to it. So I don't think much has changed. But yes, Chris, I will send you a copy after I jump off.
Can I, can I ask, can you remind us, Noah? I don't remember if these easements were, and I'm presuming, since you're bringing it to us, then for public land dedication? Or are these perhaps a change in, like, the plating of the, the parcel to dedicate these spaces, but not publicly for county responsibility, but publicly for the, the, the community there?
My understanding, and, and I'll admit that I don't, I don't believe, like, reading through the easement is like how I've caught up to speed, and I'm not a lawyer. So my understanding is that it, it's just for, like, county visitors and county residents to be able to access the land, but it would not be county responsibility to maintain the, the parcel. Part of, part of the reason that this was brought up in the first place is because we, GOAL had applied for and received funding to partially fund the play yard. But the funder had some qualms about building a play yard on public property, so the easement was, was a way to, to build it at Notonview with the public access for, for other Lake County residents.
Okay, or build, build on, not, sorry, yeah, I think you might have misspoke and said to build on public property, I think building on private property without like a public benefit for those dollars, right?
Exactly, yes.
Okay, no, I just, I, I understood you. So I guess too, is that, you know, I think, yeah, the first step would be great to have Chris review that and make sure that what is intended is in the language there. And I wonder, Paul Clarkson, I see you on here. Is there some involvement or responsibility through land use for this as well, Paul?
I, I can't see how there is, Sarah.
Okay.
And Sarah, Kayla forwarded the email with the link for the easement agreement. I just downloaded that, so I'll put that on my to-do list to review and circle back around on.
Okay.
Noah, what's your timeline looking like for us to, to move on this?
Um, I, I think it's unlikely that we'll, we'll, like, get anything built before winter. So I would say it's medium urgent. I think it'd be great if we could get everything in place and start getting bids and, and be able to move quickly next year, but it's unlikely that, that we'll actually be building or constructing anything before, before winter this year.
And GOAL still has those dollars to do that work, right, Noah?
They do, yeah, and they got an extension. So, yeah, so there, we, we don't have any grant deadlines on, on that front either.
Okay, and so our, our, really our primary responsibility is to acknowledge and have, and Nodel would record that easement, but to, to acknowledge the easement, right? Like, we aren't. Like, we aren't, well, sorry, we'll let.
I believe so, but I'll let, yeah, exactly, I'll let, I'll let Chris make that determination.
Yeah.
But that was, that was my understanding of the intent of the agreement. Um, so if it, if it binds the county to anything more than that, I think we should make some changes.
Well, well, yeah, why don't we have, why don't we have Chris review and then send, yeah, send the board a response and, uh, we can. Thanks, Chris. Yeah, we can, we can flag anything of note and, uh. Move on.
Awesome, thank you.
Noah, do you have anything else to add or anything like that?
I don't think so, um, just let me know, um, when, when everybody decides a chance to, to look it over and, and let me know when I can hop back on or answer any questions. Or, um, bring anything to Jordan, um, to review. I'll just, I'll be waiting, but thank you, I appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay, um, there's nothing else on item three. We'll move into item four, uh, the resolution for the park replacement fund. Uh, Commissioner Marcel, you gave us a good overview yesterday. Um, I don't know if you wanna repeat that as well, um, and/or if you have a resolution to pull up to read into the record?
Sure, um, give me just a second, here we go. Um, so Sarah, would you mind, um, let me share my screen here. Okay, can you see this?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so this, uh, this resolution, um, was written with, uh, Amber, Chris, and myself, um, just for the. Uh, just to kind of update, um, the Rec Replacement Fund. And so I'll just read this into the record. This is a resolution expanding the scope of the Recreation Replacement Fund and renaming the Rec- Recreation Replacement Fund. To Recreation, Recreation, oh wow, there's a typo, typo in there. Recreation Replacement Maintenance and Repair Fund. Uh, be resolved that the Board of County Commissioners had determined that it is appropriate for the continued viability of the, of Lake County recreational resources. To expand the use of funds held in the Recreation Replacement Fund. To also allow such funds to be used for maintenance, repair, and upgrades to other existing. Recreational properties and facilities beyond the community park, field, and aquatic center. The fund shall be used to not only, not only to provide funds for replacement of rubber and turf at the community park, field. And potential upgrades and repairs to the aquatic center, but to also provide funds for needed replacement, maintenance, or repairs of other county-owned recreational properties. And facilities. Amounts shall continue to be earmarked separately within the budget documents each year to specify the amount of transfer for each purpose within the fund. Um, so very minimal change, um, but allows for us to, uh, make sure that we have. Codified, if you will, um, the purpose within this fund, that each individual fund inside the fund, like the Dog Park Fund. Um, the monies from Placer, for Huck Finn, those items are separately earmarked within the fund. And so that those monies don't inadvertently get spent anywhere else. Um, be further resolved that the Board of County Commissioners has elected to rename the fund number thirty-five. From Recreation Replacement Fund to Recreation Replacement Maintenance and Repair Fund. Uh, moved, read, and adopted by the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Lake State of Colorado. At its special meeting held the twenty-first day of September, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, uh, I do not, I don't have any questions for you on this.
Yeah, um, very simple, you know, with classer, um, dissolving, uh, they had money specifically earmarked for. Um, recreational maintenance and repairs that have served a purpose. And so we wanted to be very thoughtful of that money as that was coming into our rec department, so that it would continue to be used with its original intent and purpose.
Great, awesome, well, thank you, um. We can move forward with a, a motion, um, for approval, I presume?
Thanks for sure. Um, so I will, I will move that we adopt resolution twenty-one dash twenty-two. A resolution expanding the scope of the Recreation Replacement Fund and renaming the Recreation Replacement Fund to the Recreation Replacement. Maintenance and Repair Fund.
Okay, second, any further discussion?
No, thank you.
All right, thanks, Kayla. Um, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Great, okay, well, I think we're through all of our items. Any? Any other, anything else before we go?
I don't think so. Um, Chris, do you have anything, anything else pressing for us that we need to think about doing before next week?
Um, it, just, I, there are some things I'm working on, but nothing that was noticed for the agenda today. So, um, I'll just follow it by email with y'all on those.
Okay, cool, sounds good.
Very good, and Patty, I'll, I'll, uh, try to come in by end of day to put signatures on those documents from Katie. Um, and, uh, we'll go from there. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you all.
Have a good rest of your afternoon, and, uh, one thirty-nine will adjourn. Thanks.